Good morning, everyone. This call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, October 28.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
President.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right. You'd join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and today's invocation will be led by Pastor Drew Redding, the Grace Community Fellowship in Ottawa. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. Under God.
Under God.
All right, Pastor, you on?
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
Well, let's pray together.
All right.
Heavenly Father, we just, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the changing of the seasons and just reminding us that you are in control of all things. I pray that you'd be with the commissioners this morning, that you'd be guiding them, directing them, that you'd be claiming their hearts as your own. We pray for a special amount of wisdom this morning as they seek to lead. We pray that you would just be with them not only today, but throughout their lives, that they would be an example to our community of what it looks like to be a leader. We thank you that you are a good and gracious God, that you are with us, that you are present, and that we can have a personal connection and relationship with you. We pray that you would just bless this day and bless this meeting. Pray all these things in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. All right. Down to correspondence and organizational business, and today we will be, item of business under there is to receive a presentation from the Kansas APCO Chapter awarding Janaya Fleming the Telecommunicator of the Year Award. Nick, are you on?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here with Janaya Sarah Emily Papa Papa from Dickinson County. She's representing Apco today to do the presentation, so I'll turn it over to her and she can talk about what the award is.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Emily Papa. I am the First Vice President with the Kansas Apco Board. And every year, we generally have a ceremony at our conference, but it was canceled and we did it virtually this year. So I'm here today to present Janaya Fleming with Telecommunicator of the Year. This award is chosen through submissions by different agencies throughout the state. It's voted on by the Colorado Apco Chapter to honor the nominee for their exceptional work in our industry. This year, Janaya Fleming was chosen for this award. Janaya was nominated by her Director, Nick Robbins, for her exceptional handling of a 911 call on April 3, 2019. Janaya answered a 911 call from a victim of a fully engulfed house fire, and the victim was unable to escape. Janaya was able to stay calm during this event and talking with the caller to determine his location within the residence. Janaya was able to relay the caller's location to the responding agencies. Excuse me. Janaya was on the phone gathering location updates and calming the caller until he went unresponsive because of smoke. Once the Ottawa City Fire Department arrived on scene, Janaya directed the firefighters to the garage of the residence. The victim was quickly located just a few feet from the garage door. Janaya was able to pinpoint the location through her prior conversation with the victim. Throughout the conversation with the caller, Janaya just demonstrated her strength as a dispatcher, her dedication to helping her community, and her unwavering love of dispatching. Janaya's calm strength allowed her to successfully determine the location of the caller and allowed the fire department staff to know his location in the residence. Her quick actions allowed a quick response as time was not wasted in the rescue effort. Nick believes that Janaya's actions are the reason the victim received rapid lifesaving medical care. It is a great honor to present this coveted award to Janaya in the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. Sorry, Communication Center. It's my fault. Sorry, sorry. Laugh later. Today, Janaya will be receiving a plaque, a $250 Visa gift card, a voucher for one-year membership to Apco International, and one free Spring Conference registration for the following year as a gift from the Kansas Apco Chapter on her accomplishments in 2019. And she is also eligible for awards at the international level also. So at this time, I am presenting Janaya with her plaque and her gift card
Thank you.
and a letter from the Kansas Apco Board and all your certificates. We are very proud of you and thank you for all your hard work and dedication for the communication. We're not Sheriff's Department.
Well, thank you, Emily, for coming down and presenting Janaya. What a cool award, and that's an amazing story. I'm sure maybe some of the other Commissioners would like to jump in and say something. I don't want to take up all the time.
This is Commissioner Ian Dickinson.
I just want to congratulate Commissioner Howard. I just want to congratulate you on your award. And after spending 20-some years on the police department, I realize how much easier the job is when you have that kind of dispatchers with you. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And this is Commissioner Ian Dickinson. This is one of the reasons why I wish that we were meeting in person, because I would love to just congratulate you in person. But I know we have amazing people that work in our center, so congratulations.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Dunn.
Go ahead, Dunn. Go ahead, Roy.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Dunn. Janaya, congratulations on receiving this award. And this shows professionalism of our Communication Center and our dispatchers out there. We really appreciate what they're doing. Congratulations again, Janaya.
Thank you, Tom.
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre. I guess I've been around 20 years and watched the 911. And I can just, over the years, I've just been seeing it getting better and better and better. And it doesn't surprise me, the award, because I know that 911 in Franklin County has made a lot of advances over the years. And congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
You know, Janaya, listening to us, we're on a Zoom meeting, and especially say the Pledge of Allegiance shows just how hard telecommunicating can be, or how poorly it can be done. I bet your tape was much better than that. So again, that's just an awesome thing. And the county's proud of you. We're proud of you. It's really great. So thank you for everything you guys do down there.
Hey, Cole.
Yes, Derek.
This is Derek. To be very clear, and you know, I want Janaya to know this. And then obviously, in response to Ian's comments, we will absolutely have a reception, an in-person reception, not just to recognize Janaya, but also to recognize the entire Emergency Communications Department. I mean, their accreditation that they have achieved this year is also a remarkable achievement. And so when we feel like it's safe to meet back in person, Nick and I are still working on the details of what that's going to look like, but rest assured, we will absolutely meet in person. And whether that's after a meeting, or if we literally host a special event, I think both of those achievements are worthy of getting together and having in-person recognition. So we will absolutely do that. Thanks.
Yep, that sounds like a plan. So, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, we'll move down to public comment. Janet, do we have anybody?
We do not have anyone on the call.
All right, didn't think so. Consent agenda today would include payroll in the amount of $1,232,537.38, spark claim vouchers in the amount of $690,601.83, special claim voucher in the amount of $800, claim vouchers in the amount of $764,114.48, and meeting minutes from October 14. That would be it. Is there a consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dunn, motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Howard, I'll second.
All right.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, down to items of business. The first of which would be to be considered for approval, a resolution of governing body presented in conjunction with a lease purchase agreement for motor grader. Derek?
Thanks, Cole. This is Derek. We did one of these in conjunction with financing the compactor here a month or so ago. This is just, I am learning part of the process with Patriots Bank. You have already approved, obviously, the purchase of the motor grader and utilizing financing with Patriots Bank. And normally, once you do that, with that, I'm, you know, I just accept the ability to execute the documentation. But they have, one of their attachments, they call a resolution. And I'm just, I'm comfortable signing a resolution of governing body when I'm not the governing body. So certainly here to answer questions if you have them, but you've approved of all of this. This is just a procedural requirement to get the paperwork knocked out. So if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
All right. Sounds pretty straightforward. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this document titled Resolution of Governing Body presented in conjunction with the lease purchase agreement for the motor grader?
It's Dunn. I make a motion.
All right.
This is Ian. I'll second it.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our second item of business will be considering purchasing some office furniture for the Anx remodel project.
Yeah, this is Derek. I tried to put the pertinent info in front of you there. So the company, ROS, that we are proposing to purchase this furniture from, they actually specialize in acquiring pre-owned office furniture. So they typically buy it from Fortune 500 companies, because apparently those companies turn over furniture quite a bit. So they acquire it, they refurbish pieces of it, so that it effectively looks brand new. Everything in this quote is used, and depending on the piece, we're seeing 50% to 70% savings from retail prices. And so if we were buying this quality of furniture, brand new, you're probably, I think it's safe to say you're looking at at least double the cost that's in this quote. I will tell you, it's, you know, it's good stuff. It's not great stuff. I mean, you can go out and buy laminate furniture for cheaper than this, but it's, the quality is going to be, you know, far, far less. Or you could buy, you know, the furniture that is in this quote, it's all cherry colored. It's, that's not to say it's solid cherry. I mean, if you wanted to buy a, literally, a piece of cherry office furniture, then you're going to pay probably twice the cost of what, at least of what is in this quote. And so here to answer any questions that you have about it. We are utilizing existing furniture for certain parts of the remodel, as is appropriate. I mentioned in, on the cover sheet, that this quote also includes furniture for Paul Bean's office. FCDC has agreed. They're going to reimburse us for this. We just, as a courtesy, offered to include Paul because this company has pretty good turnaround times, which are, that in and of itself is kind of hard to find right now because of the pandemic. So what questions, if any, can I answer for you?
It's Dunn. Sounds like a good deal.
Mm-hmm. Sounds taken silent as an indication that maybe you see this as a good value, as I certainly do. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve the proposal from ROS Office Furniture for the Anx remodel project?
It's Dunn. I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Dunn.
This is Ian.
Go ahead, Ian.
Yeah, my question was, how are we doing? When are we going to be in there? I'm so excited.
Yeah, I, okay. Do you want to finish the motion, Cole, and then I can answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we have a, we have a motion and a second, so I guess we'll call a question.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. So this is Derek. I don't have a firm timeline. I wish I had Brandon on the call. He might. But I will tell you, it's coming along incredibly well. We have been pretty happy with Lloyd Builders from the beginning of this, because they got in there and they demoed the space and then they had it framed. They appear to be making great progress on this. And so we're all excited about it. And then the other thing that I neglected to mention, and it's on the cover sheet, but this isn't, I think this will represent the lion's share of the cost associated with this. But there will be, like our big conference room, we still, in lieu of a massive conference room table, we're going to buy a series of mobile tables and chairs and that stuff. It's hard to find it used, and so we're going to have to buy new. But that, you know, to say it's cheap, but that can all be purchased well within my spending allowance. I mean, you're looking at, again, the lion's share of the cost. And then you just think about miscellaneous furnishings, just, you know, the chairs you're going to put in the reception area, or an end table and a lamp, just little things like that. And so because we're doing this ourselves, like we haven't hired a designer or anything. I mean, I think it'll be a work in progress. It'll take some time, but we'll get there. And I think the space will be great. We'll certainly be exceptionally functional from the get-go. And then, you know, we'll, we'll get the stuff that we need to make it, I don't know what word to use, more comfortable, I guess, put something on the walls and whatnot. So, thanks, Cole.
All right, thank you, Derek. Anyone else on this? Then we're going to move down to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, we continue with our COVID response. And I'll turn it over to Nick to let him really dive into the details on that. Janet and I continue to work with Whit O'Brien on the allocation of funding for, from the CARES Act. And we are continuing to make good progress on that. You'll recall that we allocated $250,000 to help our community partners. And it's taken some time, but I think we've got a pretty good plan in place there in order to do that. So I think that will be coming in front of you potentially as early as next week. And then we still need to really drill down into this. But I do believe that there, you know, there's probably going to be some excess funds that need allocated. And we've kind of already had the discussion at the county level. So with our original allocation, we realized that there were going to be, there was going to be a bit of a surplus. But it's looking like, you know, we've had a couple of the cities not respond, and we just, they're not going to. It's not for lack of trying. I just, I don't think they, whether it's a leadership issue or they just haven't incurred COVID expenses, that they're just not going to utilize the funds. And so we need to talk, Janet and I, and then talk with Whit O'Brien about what we potentially want to do with that, if we want to open it back up to the cities and schools. But regardless of what we do, we need to do it fairly quickly, because those funds still need to be spent by the end of the year. And so considerable time has been spent on that process. I believe, Cole, that that's all I have this morning. So thank you.
All right, thanks. Nick?
All right, I am sitting here looking at the COVID numbers. We've seen, we've got a total of 542 total positive cases since the beginning of COVID. One of the things that we continue to deal with is rapid testing locations and what they're doing. For example, we have 54 active cases. Yesterday, I added 11 new cases to Franklin County that was reported by the state. All but two of those are past a 14-day window, because they were not reported in a timely fashion from rapid testing locations outside of Franklin County. So that's essentially nine individuals that we could not trace, that we couldn't work with, that could have continued to spread COVID if they didn't have a quarantine order. So throughout the state, we continue to see frustrations of the lack of reporting from agencies on COVID testing. And that's, that's really one of the biggest things we're working with right now, is how we're going to deal with that and hoping that individuals do self-report. But we're not seeing a change. It's actually getting worse to more and more places that are getting rapid testing capability. The second problem we're continuing to see is these rapid testing locations and also doctor's offices not following a testing guideline. And I've talked about this enough, but I feel like to keep saying it, if somebody's in contact with somebody that's got COVID today and they get tested tomorrow, they will test negative. There's nothing that's going to make them test positive unless they previously have had COVID-19. Ideally, the test needs to be seven days following that contact. And anything before that greatly increases the risk of false negative tests. And if you look at outbreak throughout our county and continue to look at outbreak through our county, most all of them are because we have businesses that deem themselves essential and have people that work as positives, or we have, we have individuals who are not following quarantine orders. Those are the two biggest reasons we've had the outbreaks we've seen. People that go play sports or go to work with COVID-like symptoms. And that's, that's the battle that we continue to have throughout the Health Department, is if you're sick, stay home. We have great access to testing in Franklin County, and with that, we have the ability to work with people, even individuals that can't afford it, don't have healthcare. So I highly encourage them, and I hope if you hear of this, where you can encourage them too, to come talk to us or call us. With that, we did have two more deaths in the county, so we are up to five. I tell you, they had underlying health conditions that were exacerbated by COVID. So we have seen a rapid slowdown in the positives coming out of OU. So we've kind of peaked at it right around 100 individuals from OU and are continuing to see that decline. Really, that's about all I have with COVID. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I do want to, I guess, one more thing. There's some very good literature out there. I have a good PowerPoint sent to me from KU talking about mask usage. And I, I've had businesses contact me. I've had residents of the county contact me. One of them contacted and said that Walmart's quit mandating masks, and that the Franklin County Commission has quit following the mask mandate that was, that we have voted to follow the governor's orders. So we have worked with Casey. I think we're going to put a more literature out there about mask usage. But there is good evidence out there that if two people are wearing a mask, it greatly decreases the risk of the transmission of COVID. So I strongly think we need to keep pushing that. We need to make sure that we are telling people to wear masks. Dr. Ransom and I have also agreed that if two individuals are wearing a proper mask, which is a double-layered mask, that it does not make them a close contact versus people who are wearing the wrong mask or not wearing masks at all. So we're working with the schools on that. Now with that, I'll open it up for questions.
This is Commissioner Howard. Nick, I really don't have a question. I just was going to piggyback on. I also got a couple of calls yesterday, one from an individual wanting to know we couldn't do more to enforce the mask usage. And I explained that to him, that we were following the governor's orders, but that's kind of where it stood. And then I actually got a call from another county commissioner from another county last night. They came into Ottawa to do some shopping and had some questions, because they went into a couple of businesses and said only about half of the people in the businesses were wearing the mask. And wanted to know if we had opted out of the governor's order. And I told them no, but we were following the governor's order. That's just, it was up to the businesses if they wanted to enforce the mask usage in their businesses and so forth. So I did get a couple of calls on that, asking me some questions about the mask usage, thinking that we had opted out of it possibly. That's all I got.
Mm-hmm. It sounds like there's some confusion out there. Nick, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, just, I will tell you, the Health Department, we get a lot of phone calls on the same thing, of people talking about, asking why we're not mandating the mask. So that, I have heard a lot of what you just spoke about, Commissioner Howard. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nick. Casey?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, I will also echo what Nick said and relay that I get a ton of phone calls about masks in different businesses, like why aren't they wearing masks? So we will try to get something out today that clarifies a little better and just re-encourage people to do their part. I do have a quick update. Hopefully, you've seen a lot about, or a lot of our branding out and about in the community. A lot of our forums are getting updated. I'm still working with different departments as they come about new forums that they haven't used for a few months, or something that needs updated that hasn't been updated yet. But we're in the process. It's been a soft rollout, but I think it's been a good rollout. We did just order an acrylic piece to replace the Franklin County logo in the commission chambers, and I'm really excited about what that will look like. So I will be anxious when the time comes that we can get back into the commission chambers for everyone to see that. And we did order a sample of a decal for vehicles. We can get them relatively inexpensively. And those would be kept out at the shop, and as vehicles need their logo replaced, they'll have the new logo ready on hand. And the guys out at the shop have a process that takes about 15 minutes, and they'll get those replaced. So it'll be nice to see the new logo on vehicles as well. As far as the website goes, the update is well underway, and we are really squeezing this in to have it live by the end of the year. Dustin and I have worked with a lot of different departments on updating their content on the page. And I have been working with some area photographers to try to get high-resolution images for the new website that really are inclusive of the entire county. that really are inclusive of the entire county, the rural areas, the smaller towns, um, et cetera. So I'm excited about that. We will just feature one big photo each, um, I don't know if it'll be quarterly or monthly. Um, we'll kind of see how that goes. But, um, if there are any photographers that are listening to the meeting and they would like to see their photos or their images, um, featured on our website, we'd be happy to work with them in, in doing that. So, um, the sheriff and district court also have their own department header pages as a part of our website. So they essentially have their own website on the Franklin County platform. So most of our attention has recently been on getting their webpages ready. And, um, we are, we're getting there. So I'm excited to see that all come to fruition. And then lastly, I wanted to let commissioners know that, um, and I don't know that this has been mentioned this year, but we are applying for heritage funds again this year to, um, renovate the clock and the clock tower and the bell tower on top of the historic courthouse. Um, so this, um, is all getting turned in hopefully by the end of this week. Um, the clock was actually placed on the courthouse in nineteen-eleven, so it's had a hundred and ten-plus years of weathering. And this is, um, much needed, a much needed repair. So funding is received, um, and after the repairs are complete, the clock will be restored back to working order exactly as it was originally installed. And the bell will chime, um, hourly as it did for years. So excited about that. Um, so unless you have any questions for me, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Casey. Sheriff Richards?
Yes, good morning. Um, I wanted to, uh, echo some of the congratulations that were passed on to Janae on her award as well. She's a, she's a great dispatcher and takes on a, a lot of leadership in there in that center as well. And that, that award was well-deserved, uh, she did a great job. Also, our congratulations would go to the, uh, Ottawa High School, uh, girls volleyball team and the West Franklin Girls Volleyball Team. Uh, both of them, uh, won their, uh, won sub-state and are participating in the state. Both of them won games last night as well. So they're headed to semifinals of state. And, uh, we participated with West Franklin, kind of send-off for that team to kind of honor them. And so, uh, we were happy to be, be a part of that as well. And then, um, Friday, we will have, um, three of our staff members that will be graduating from KLATC. Typically, we have people that will go down to graduation, um, to, to be, to watch that ceremony in person be, because of all the COVID restrictions, we're not able to do that. So we're gonna be compromising, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of adjust a little bit and we're gonna come up with, we came up with a plan, we're gonna host that, a watch party for that so we can watch the, uh, the, uh, graduation live, um, in our training center. As you, Deputy Riley Rivers is class president, so he'll be, he'll be, uh, one of the, one of the speaker, uh, giving a speech at that, a graduation as well. So we, we intend to invite their, their family members in and some of our staff so that we can watch that and kind of celebrate with our employees as, uh, on their graduation from the academy. So, um, other than that, we are just kind of plugging away. Things are, um, seem to be, from a, a law enforcement perspective, completely back to normal because, uh, we're running out of room in the jail. We have, um, eleven farmed out. And, um, but right now, we're still maintaining, uh, all of the procedures and, uh, COVID restrictions, uh, things that were in place. And so we're still standing above water, but it's, it gets a little more difficult every day, uh, but with people being back, uh, to committing COVID and coming to our facilities. So, um, that's all I have, unless any of you have questions for me.
Jeff, this is Derek. I have a question. When you host your, your parties during a pandemic, do you require that your employees wear masks? And do you keep them socially distanced?
Uh, the, part of the reason we're using the training room is because we are able to distance. But if, we don't typically have masks because we are able to distance and these are the people that we're around all the time on calls. So, um, we don't, typically, we don't have a lot of people come in from the outside. We made this time with some families and so that, that'll probably change things up.
Thank you.
All right, David Lee, Public Works.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, I'm not sure if you can hear it on the, while they're, I'm not hearing any construction noises right at the, right this second, but I can assure you those folks over there are working, uh, working hard every day to, uh, get that remodel completed. Uh, the road and bridge department, uh, worked our first winter storm, uh, Monday and Tuesday. And, and as you all know, uh, we started preparing for that on Friday afternoon, getting the trucks loaded up and make, you know, double-check to make sure everything is operational. We started, uh, spreading material at daylight Monday morning, uh, mostly on our, on our bridges, hills, curves and, and near stop signs. And then we continued that work, kind of hitting hotspots on Tuesday and also the subdivisions. So, um, got the first storm under our belt and, and, uh, will be ready to, uh, ready for the next one, whenever that might get here. Uh, as it dries out, uh, we'll get back to our regular, um, road maintenance, um, issues that we work on on a regular basis. Uh, the weather has, uh, caused a, a little bit of a delay on getting started with our asphalt, uh, project. Uh, we're anticipating that starting on Monday now. And I've got a meeting with Kilo Construction, uh, here in about, uh, just under an hour to go over the final details, uh, of that project and get them started. Uh, we have, uh, we've been working with SCS engineers out at the landfill on developing a plan for, uh, the future of the C and D landfill. And, uh, we're about to the point where we need to, uh, make some decisions and give the, um, uh, the consultants some final directions so they can finish their, uh, final report for us. And then we can get on with action items after that. Uh, I'm anticipating, uh, having that ready to go for your review on the study session, uh, on November sixteenth. Uh, that will give me plenty of time to put that together along with, uh, some information related to the, uh, bridge deck issues that, uh, we have currently in the county. I've, uh, got things pretty much ready to go, but I'm waiting on a couple of last, last pieces of information, questions that I had that, uh, came up while I was preparing things for you. So we'll try to hit both of those items, uh, on the sixteenth and, and, um, so I'll have a memo prepared similar to what we did for the landfill early on. Uh, we'll have that kind of detail for you, uh, along with the recommendation. And then we can discuss it and, and hopefully have some action items come out of that. So, uh, those things are coming up. Uh, other than that, it, it's business as usual around here.
All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Janet?
Good morning, commissioners. I just wanted to give you an update on early voting. Um, so far, well, yesterday was the deadline to mail out advanced ballots. Um, we have a few more that came in to our office, uh, via email after office hours. So we'll get, be getting those final few sent out this morning. Um, so we will finish with two thousand eight hundred and eighty, um, advanced ballots that went out by mail. And we've received a good number of those back. Um, probably close to eighteen hundred of those we've received back. So we're having a really great, um, turnout on advanced voting. Um, early voting in the office is going very well also. We've had one thousand seven hundred and eleven voters vote early at this time. Um, yesterday was our highest day with a hundred and seventy-six, um, registered voters, uh, through the door yesterday. And I'm sure if you're in the courthouse, you'll see the increased volume of traffic. And we do have our face mask signs up on the door and we are asking that all of our voters that come in the office wear a face mask. Uh, so we are, uh, working on that. Uh, everyone is very respectful that comes in and are all trying to give each other plenty of space to stay socially distant. So I think that's a really great thing also. And when we, you know, feel like we have more than enough people in, we'll just kind of stop the, stop some people from coming in. But that's only happened a couple of times where we've had more than two or three people in the line and had to, um, hold off for a few minutes. But the line keeps moving fairly quickly. Um, morning hours are obviously slower than the afternoon hours. Tonight is our last late night. We'll be open till seven tonight for early voting. And then we'll be open on Saturday again from nine to one. And our last day for early voting will be on Monday from eight to noon. So as Derek said, uh, we're really working hard on the spark funds and making sure that everything is, um, accounted for in our plan. Um, as you saw in the claim vouchers, those were the payouts, um, made initially to, um, our partners, like the four school districts, um, city of Welsville and the city of Ottawa on, um, their items that are in the plan. So we continue to, um, see those reports come in and work closely with those organizations and Whit O'Brien to make sure that those needs are met and, and taken care of. So I think that's all I have. If you have any questions, I take them.
Uh, this is Commissioner Mann, Janet. Uh, do you process advanced ballots as they come in or do you have to wait?
I think what you're asking is if do we count them as they come in? And no, we do not run them through the scanner as they come in like we would, um, an early voter. And the reason for that is, is there's a lot of backend work that we have to do on those. Those take quite a lot of time to process, um, making sure that every one of them is accounted for, checked in on the system, their signature is verified, any follow-up that's necessary is done. So we don't do that. We will start processing those probably either the day before, uh, on Monday, um, after we're done early voting. Uh, but more than likely, we'll start that first thing in the morning on Election Day, getting those all processed.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I, I've had several people that, um, have asked how we make sure that people can't double-vote if they come in early. But these new electronic books that we got are really helping in that instance, aren't they?
Yeah, they absolutely are. So we, uh, do an upload each and every day, um, to sync up our poll books so we make sure that, um, everyone is in there that has gotten an advanced ballot in the mail. And likewise, everyone who's early-voted goes back into our online system that talks with the state. Um, so the secretary of state can run reports, uh, statewide for different candidates and, and different organizations to, so that they can have those voter numbers throughout, throughout the early voting period so they can make those reports to different entities. So they are an amazing resource. Um, as you know, we purchased our electronic poll books with, um, COVID money and they have been a great resource and they are much better at keeping everyone, um, from touching the same thing. So, um, our poll workers have identified that. And if you've been in to vote or you know anyone who's been in to vote, everyone gets their, an individual pin that has a stylus on the end, so they sign the poll pad with their own stylus that they take with them and the other end of the pin, so they vote their ballot with that and they take that pin with them. So we don't have anything left over that we need to be cleaning or anything like that. So these poll pads have helped us tremendously in keeping everyone safe and, and virus-free.
All right, thank you, Janet.
Hey, hey Colt.
Yeah, Derek.
Yeah, could I, before we transition to, uh, board comment, could I say one more thing?
Yeah, go for it.
Um, and, and certainly Nick could chime in here if he, if he chooses to do so. But I, I do wanna end on a COVID-related note. There is starting to be a ton of chatter on, on my listserv. So I, I've talked to you guys before about the various listservs that I am on. Um, and for those of you who don't know, a listserv is basically, uh, I'm gonna embarrass myself because I'm sure I can't describe what a listserv is, but basically, uh, an email chain that you're part of. So I am on one with all of the county administrators in Kansas, um, all the county councilors through, you know, um, KAC, there's, there's one there. But anyway, there's a lot of talk about, um, there's starting to be talk about hospital capacity. Um, I know here, it was almost exactly two weeks ago Crawford County's Board of Commissioners had to hold a special meeting. Um, the, the entire purpose of the meeting was to discuss, um, what to do because their hospital was full. And, and we're starting to see those concerns pop up. And, and it's just a reminder that I, I, I think we all know people that have had it now. And, and so many of the people who have had this indeed have had mild symptoms. And because of that, it's easy to, to look at this and say, well, look, we're, we're going through all of this for, uh, a runny nose and a low-grade fever. But, but that, that was never, I mean, we've always known that about COVID. The, the point of trying to quote-unquote flatten the curve was to protect your most vulnerable population. And, and I, I just, I, I don't think that can be said enough. It's, it, you know, yeah, the, the otherwise healthy, the young, like, probably aren't going to succumb to COVID. But with every action or inaction that we take, um, we risk infecting somebody that may have real complications. And, and that's to say nothing of if our hospital is at capacity due to COVID, well, there are any number of other issues that somebody could have a heart attack. Well, what happens then? I mean, it's just, it is something that we need to be cognizant of. And given, you know, the outbreaks that we're seeing, particularly in one of our nursing facilities, like, it is not a far-fetched possibility that we face that in this community. And so, um, it, it's hard, my goodness, like, we know it's hard. Um, you know, as tired of, a, a, as the public is of COVID, like, I can promise you, my staff and I are equally as tired of dealing with this. Like, that's all we do and, and it's exhausting. But the battle continues. And, and I would just ask that we think about the vulnerable folks in our population and what we can do to protect them. Nick, do you have anything? I don't know that you really touched on hospital capacity, but do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the conversations, on Tuesday, we have, uh, an ESF eight, which is basically a medical meeting. And, and the conversation continues to rise of what happens when we do get a, a large group of people. I will tell you, the first, uh, the first flu swab came back positive yesterday from Ottawa family physician. So we know flu's starting to show its head. And with that, we're looking at nursing facilities that have upward of twenty-one individuals in it. Right now, there's three hospitalized from that facility, plus I know of two more. That alone, if that was at Agnant, Ottawa would overtake them on COVID and, and greatly, uh, utilize their resources. So we, we do need to be thinking about with the flu season coming on with COVID and, and it was that, that we are, we could very easily overwhelm our local resources. And we know every year, the hospitals in the city get overwhelmed about this time with flu. So we're back into that crunch time where we've gotta be thinking about those things.
This is Commissioner Howard. I just kind of wanna piggyback, Derek, on what you said, um, about that a lot of people we've known with mild symptoms. I, I've known several people now that has had this and, you know, did have the milder symptoms. I also personally knew two of our five deaths that we've had, so there's both sides of it.
All right. Well?
Uh, Colt, thank you.
That's it, okay. Thank you. Uh, let's go to Commissioner comments and I'll start with you, Commissioner Howard.
Uh, I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Only thing I kinda, I did attend to Zoom, have our commissioner's room there, the, the deal that Derek set up for us in there, uh, the Kansas Water Office, I had- the deal that Derek set up for us in there, the Kansas Water Office. I had a, I was on a Zoom with them, I believe it was the day before yesterday. And I know Roy will probably tell you, he was in there and used that service too for the KAC. So I want to thank Derek for setting that up for us in there. I'll be going to Welsville City meeting tonight. And I did go to Ottawa's volleyball last night. And the state is doing a good job of, of allocating certain amount of people to get in, allocating and make sure everybody wears masks, allocating to they, they do the best they can to regulate things on, on the floor for the participants. And so I think everybody's pretty well trying to do whatever they can to, to keep things at a very low level. So that's all I got.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, I finally, finally got caught up with the KAC and the voting on the legislative initiative yesterday. And I finally got to vote as a delegate. So it only took a week for them to finish the KAC meeting. So just want to let everybody know. And the legislative agenda was pretty much the same as previous year. So not a whole lot of difference in that. Other than that, I reiterate what Derek and Nick and our health people are saying because I also received some calls about mask or no mask. And I think it's individual responsibility to be courteous and respectful for everyone on this, on this issue. So I believe in following the, you know, our health department and our experts on, on the latest information from, from those folks. So that's all I have right now.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson?
This has been a two weeks, two weeks since we had our meeting. So we had a neighborhood revitalization committee where we were presented quite a few new properties to go into that program. And a lot of those are on the old Lincoln School site on the north side of town. It's great to see that we are continuing to increase our tax base with new affordable housing and other properties that are being refurbished and being improved upon. Also, I did go in and early voted. I wanted to make sure that I didn't get caught in COVID quarantine or some other, not being able to vote. And it's important to me to vote. So I did do that, and it was a very simple process. And you feel very, to go into the courthouse to do that, I mean, you don't feel like you are in jeopardy at all of being contaminated. So yeah, it, it's a great process. I already have voted, and I know that if, but if you haven't voted, the, the candidate forum that they had down at Legacy Square was pretty cold. They did have a lot of people that attended, but it is online. So except for the national president, almost all of the other, all the state candidates that she would vote for, and the county candidates are, were at that forum. So if you are still thinking that you don't know who to vote for, that is available online. And then in the last couple of weeks, COVID did become pretty personal to me. I know of two people that have passed away, one in Franklin County and one in Alatha County, that, yeah, they both had, they were both elderly with underlying conditions, but that, you don't, COVID is, they didn't have to go that way. So I continue to wear my mask anytime I'm out in public. So I would just encourage everybody, wear your mask, get your flu shot, and vote. And that's it.
All right. Since we last met, I attended the Elizabeth Clayton Senators Finance Committee. And we received the audit report, the annual audit, and that all came back clean. And met with Senator Moran's new district director. He's probably familiar with the position. He's basically the liaison between local governments and, and the senator. He covers about a dozen counties. Jason Osterhaus is his name. He's a former Johnson County, County Commissioner. So he didn't need anything. He was just making himself known. So introduced himself to Franklin County. So as best as he can with our current situation with COVID. So with that, is there anyone else needs to say anything before we look adjourned?
This is Commissioner Dunn. Colt, is David Lee still on the line?
Yes, sir.
David, the pothole or sinkhole at the intersection of Sand Creek and Isenhour is just the west of that intersection has redeveloped. And I don't know whether the, the base is given out underneath there or what. But it needs, it needs attention again.
Okay. I'll, somebody will go out and look at it today.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Dunn. Motion to adjourn.
All right. Give me a second.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second.
All right. I think I am got in there. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.